Well, we discussed it at the last meeting and we had discussed raising it to seventy-five dollars. Because this is my biggest complaint and Bruce, you complained and complaining to blame you've been several different places. But they have ten days and correct me if I'm wrong, we have ten days, they write them a ticket. I'm for the seventy-five dollars that got voted down, so at least do it to the fifty. You look at your neighbors and you look at the rest of the people in the city and that's what we're here for. We are here to speak up for everybody else out there and we do not want your neighborhood looking like a junkyard. So, I mean, if we're not gonna do seventy-five like we did, we need to at least come up with a fifty dollars.
You mean seventy-five for the first offense?
I think seventy-five for the first offense and I was all for it and got voted down, so nobody wants to do seventy-five. Cause they have ten days. If you're not mowing your grass or you've got junk in your yard, they're gonna write you a ticket for ten days. You have ten days to clean that up. I am sorry, but ten days is a lot of time to clean up a mess. It just is. You know, we have to get trash service just like everybody else. We have to mow our lawn just like everybody else. And if we have to do what everybody else is, then it's making our town look junky and trashy. And it's just, I drove around this past weekend, I drove around the last weekend, you know, to drive around and look at some of these places, it's trashy. You know, and that's, what does that say to new people coming to town? I don't like it.
What's gonna happen after the ten days?
After the ten days, what we voted for the last time was to increase it to seventy-five dollars.
Okay, I've got a question I wanna ask you. The other night on TV, and I think some of these people probably heard it. In Springfield, they have twelve days to get their grass mowed or somebody comes and mows it and charges them for it. I'm in favor of getting that done here in Mountain Grove.
Well, how much are you gonna charge them? Because if someone comes and mows my lawn, I have three acres of yard. And if they're gonna charge me twenty-five bucks-
I'd charge you plenty.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna look to hire someone to start cleaning it?
I would suggest, I would suggest that the city hires somebody, yes, I do.
Rick, what are they, what are we doing now for that?
We send them according lessons in extreme case. We mow three or four years' off. Just get their extreme case. Otherwise, we're a quarter.
But what do we charge it?
We do it by the hour depending on the size of the, of the lot. If it's a small lot, it's probably a hundred dollars and if it's a big lot, two or three.
Now, Rick, Mark's got some news on this. For now, do you have time?
Well, I think that actually, uh, Lauren Moore, who's one of the people in Council next, actually come up with that.
Okay.
But it has to do with this.
It has to do with this?
And, uh, just to make a long story short, we can do that. Uh, if that's what you choose to do.
Something needs to be done because, I mean, I've driven around and, you know, you see, and like I said, I mean, there's instances that happen, but they still have ten days. You know, there's a house I drive home every day and it's right across Wal- or on Wall Street. You pass over the train tracks, that two-story house on the left, continue on. They've never seen anybody live in it. And the grass, it's like a, it's like a small hayfield and it just, it, it looks disgusting whenever you see it. And it's just like, really? You know, I don't like seeing that. I know my neighbors don't like seeing it. But we voted the seventy-five dollars down, so there's something we've gotta do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we gonna run into any liabilities for doing that if we, if we do pass it, for us to cut it?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, Dan. No, um, we have the right to do that. And, um, and we have done it before. Uh, collecting our money has always been the problem in the past, um, but we think we might have a solution for that.
Okay. So Holly, would you like to make, go ahead and get it?
Are we not contacting the landlords now like we previously agreed or?
We, we contact the landowners and if there's a renter there, they're contacted. And, and if they don't comply, then we do contact landlords. But Missouri passed a law that says you can't hold a landlord responsible for a renter's actions. So unless they have a rental agreement that says that we provide yardage service, um, landlord's not really the way to go. Now, if we mow it, we've gotta send it to go and have it.
The bill.
The bill, yeah.
So here's, here's my, my deal is, we voted the seventy-five dollars down. But we're gonna have the city come in and, and, and our city workers are gonna go mow. We're gonna pay them that money and may not get reimbursed. So why not still hold that person liable for it? They have ten days to mow it and I still think seventy-five dollars, if I'm not gonna, if they're not gonna mow their lawn, I mean, twenty-five dollars is nothing. And to me, in all honesty, I mean, twenty-five dollars isn't hitting them at all. And I think still scare them. I think charging seventy-five dollars.
And second offense, what, how?
I think a hundred.
About a hundred forty-five, maybe?
Now, Rick, we can go ahead and charge them seventy-five and still if we don't, if we can get it, still send the bill down?
In order for them to be charged, it's fine. They've actually gotta go through court and the judge has gotta find it.
Yeah.
We don't want to talk an act.
Yeah, I mean, if the judge said-
Uh, if, if we're gonna cut it before it gets to court, um, then it kinda changes the ballgame.
So if we're gonna cut it, put it on their taxes?
We, we really, we really need to make people responsible for their own property if at all possible. It's, it's at the point where they're not gonna be responsible for it and if it's lingering there like this one you're talking about across from the wall.
It's been lingering there for having-
Most people live in Lebanon. They've been notified, um, I think they've even been written. And, uh, we got a call from a realtor Friday that's been turned over to and the owner said, "I'm gonna get in there in the next few days and get it mowed." Well, it's been a few days. Of course, it did rain over the weekend, granted, but, but we haven't seen any movement on it yet. Um, and we do get a lot of them that are either gone back to the banks or, or a realtor has control of it. But if we mow it, we've got to assess the owner regardless of where they live. I mean, that's, that's the only way we can do it.
The owner?
Yeah.
So can we do something that if we give them like, if we do the first notice and you fifty dollars and others a fifty dollars, is their way to, you know, to say, "Hey, you're gonna pay the fifty dollars, but the second time that I have to come here, you're gonna wind up, we're gonna mow it and we're gonna charge you a hundred dollars to mow it."
Yes, you can do that, but that won't speed the process.
Because they still have to go to court because they've been taken.
See, they still have that right in Missouri to get a continuance, which almost all of them get.
Right.
So, you get them to court and they get a continuance for another thirty days down the road. By then, they're asked to still not mow and retire.
Right.
Um, you know, we can tell, I mean, you can tell by driving around. You tell which ones are gonna comply-
Oh, yeah.
-and which ones aren't. And we can, not every case, but pretty much we can tell which ones are gonna comply and which ones aren't. So, if you, if you want us to go in and mow those, then I can just guarantee that they're not gonna mow it. Um, and we can do those cases and let the others take their course in court. It doesn't matter that we'll, we'll go ahead and wrap them once, though. I just, I just know there are some that will do and there are some that aren't doing it.
Right, right.
And we, you know.
But you can't recontinue-
It's a continual thing. It's a continual thing.
Question, the house on West North, uh, by Mountain Grove Building Supply, that's been going on for how many years now? Eight, eight or nine?
Long time.
Long time.
You talking about the house over there?
Yes, the one west, that's on West, West is where-
Corner of West, yeah.
By that Road Building Supply.
Hasn't it been burnt for about ten years?
I think so. So where are we, where do we stand on that one? Do you have any?
Well, we're gonna be distracted here. We, I'll be happy to answer the questions and get him, and us address that. But we're going from grass to-
Yeah.
Well, there's grass, there's grass there too.
Okay, well, we need to talk about the grass first, this wasn't the deal. After, after we get that resolved, then we can answer.
Holly, what kind of, would you like to make a motion on a price you'd like to see on this?
I, I mean, the fifty, seventy-five and a hundred, the last one got voted down to seventy-five hundred. So maybe if we do the fifty, the seventy-five and a hundred, fifty time first offense, second time seventy-five dollars, third time. Um, and maybe that'll start scaring them or doing something. It's just like Rick said, there's gonna be some that's not even-
And this is on the grass?
For right now, yeah.
Right, we're, we're gonna dress it down.
Okay.
And that would still be the judge's discretion, right, as far as?
I went around this, this weekend checking on one in Ward Ford. We had eight places, four of them were bringing that up. It don't bother me to go up and, I don't know, ask somebody, hadn't, hadn't mowed their grass yet. Maybe it's not my place to do it, but somebody gotta do it. And, and most of them just complied and did it more the next day or so. But I went to one place that had called me about grass problems down the corner. I said, "Well, we'll see about getting it cleaned up." And I said, "That field back there behind your house too?" "Oh, no," he said, "that field." I said, "I like it that way." I said, "You want it or don't you?" You know, we can't have it both ways, so.
We send letters, don't we, Rick, to?
Mm-hmm.
What about the hayfields, those so-called hayfields? I doubt they use them all.
They, they still use them for farming technically and I think that kinda gets treated a different way if I'm not mistaken. I'm, I'm really not sure on, on that, but I know there's several hayfields inside.
Technically, according to the law, everything inside the Salem, it should be treated the same. But there have been established hayfields for thirty, forty years and everybody's always allowed them to hay them and we've continued to allow them to hay them. Um, that, that's strictly a judgment call and you don't want them to be hayed, we'll, we'll mow them, but that's, that's what's happened. I mean, they've been haying them for a long time.
So they're basically in the same category as the rest?
They're, they're absolutely in the same category. But you get somebody that's got a hundred and so acres, um, it's kinda hard to have them mow it down like you do your front yard.
And we have, we have a hayfield per se. I mean, we have seven acres there at the house. And I mean, we have a field that's fenced off and we have a gentleman come and mow it twice a year, but that's it. You know, but nobody's sitting there looking at it. It's just out our back doors.
There's, um, well, there's several, I mean, there's several places. Um, headin' on over at thirteen and Bush, I don't know how many acres that is, it's a big field, but it's always been hayed. Um, you know, um, here's about a hundred and fifty acres, a lot of toilets, a lot of it is, um-
Larry Carroll.
Carroll. I mean, there's, you know, out by the truck court out on ninety-five and around that first curve, there's seven or eight acres. It's always been something that way. There's hayfield on Sunshine, there's one on, on, um, Wall. There's one on Klaus, one I know is a home that we're building a few years ago. Um, over off of Fifth Street. Um, I heard, I heard, you know, um, they've always hayed that, you know, over here. And, um, so there are, there are a lot of them that have just been made continually for allowing you. Um, you know, but technically, though, to answer your question, they come under the same.
Okay, Holly, do you wanna make a motion, you say, on?
The racing. Fifty dollars for the first offense, seventy-five for the second and a hundred for the third.
Okay, do we have a second on this?
Sure.
Okay. Any last question? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Next, Lauren Moore. I think she's got some good ideas coming in here.
Do my best. I don't think we'll have to see her.
Yeah.
Okay, make your turn. Let me start by thanking you for serving on our City Council. It's an important job because the future of our city depends on the decisions that are made here in this chamber. It takes courage to be an elected official. Anyone who chooses these positions know they will face controversial issues and must have the temperament to meet these challenges head on. I'm hoping that all of you have taken on this challenge because you want to be a part of helping Mountain Grove to meet its full potential. I'm also hoping that no one is here because they simply have an agenda or an axe to grind. I am the fourth generation of my family to call Mountain Grove home. The house my grandparents built on Center Street in the mid nineteen forties is still occupied by me and today. During these years, several of my family members have served on, on the city. Two councils, two uncles were aldermen. My grandfather and two uncles served as city marshal. My father served on the industrial community, was a volunteer fireman, and at the time of his death, he was the fire chief. I'm simply giving you these facts to help you understand that I have a heritage and I have a vested interest in Mountain Grove. And that's why I'm here to speak to you tonight. I'm honored to agenda to discuss the ordinances that Holly was pretty much talking about of tall grass and weeds and also the problem we have with abandoned properties. First, let me say that Mountain Grove has more than five fire chiefs in this area. He is dedicated to making his department adhere to the standard and is on the leading edge in there in different ways of protecting our city. His volunteers are well-trained in every aspect of firefighting. Besides his duties as fire chief, he is also responsible for the safety issues of our city. After discussing the problem of abandoned buildings with Chu Bushon, I found he has a good number of these throughout our city. It's a real concern to him, just as it is to those who have to live next door to abandoned buildings and houses. Seemingly, he initiates the process full well knowing nothing will or can be done. In two thousand and six, Dr. Peter Eaton at University of Kansas City Center for Economic Information did a survey of abandoned properties. In his report, he stated, abandoned buildings by their nature invite increased crime. A survey in Austin, Texas found crime rates were twice as high on blocks with abandoned buildings. Lost tax revenues to cities, counties and school districts are a cost of abandoned buildings. Private property owners also have to share the cost of abandoned buildings. A study of more than fourteen thousand homes found that houses that were within one hundred and fifty feet of an abandoned house sold for much less than a comfortable home that had no abandoned buildings. According to Dr. Eaton, perhaps the worst damage done by abandoned properties is the toll that they exact on the quality of life for low and middle income people who have little or no choice but to live near abandoned properties. Simply put, they are a blight to Missouri neighborhoods. After doing a little research and making a few phone calls, I found the answer to how cities in Missouri take these houses down. I called the city of Springfield and asked how long it takes them to bring down abandoned property. I was shocked when she said, "Twelve to eighteen months." My response was that I thought there was a mountain of legal issues which had to be addressed before a city can demolish a house. Springfield starts the process if only one of thirteen, one of thirteen violations of their code is violated. I then asked how they were reimbursed for the cost of this demolition. I was told the property owner is responsible for this cost and if it's not paid, then there's a lien on that property and added to the city taxes. If it is not collected in this manner, then they are reimbursed the cost of these expenses when the property is sold on courthouse steps. We no longer have city property taxes. So I called our county collector and asked her if this could be added to the county taxes and she said yes. And they had just done this for the city of Mansfield. While speaking with the same person, I asked how their city handled all the tall weeds and grass. Many of you actually, uh, perhaps saw their process if you watched KY three news this past week. If grass or weeds reach a height of twelve inches, the inspector posts that property and they receive a letter. If there's no response within twelve days, the city mows it and a lien is put on the property. And if not paid, this also will be added to their city tax. If this is rental property, then a letter is sent to both the tenant and the owner. And then ultimately, the owner of the property is the one responsible. Their mowing rates start at two hundred dollars and many times can much, run much higher than five hundred dollars. This is not classified as a fine, so no court or attorney is involved. It's simply between the city and the property owner or renter. Our city crews stay busy, was just the basics here, and don't have the time to do this kind of work. Therefore, I can see no reason why this work cannot be contracted out to someone who's in the lawn mowing business. I hope each of you had an opportunity to look at the pictures getting examples of high weeds from my own ward and very close to my house. When this issue was brought up previously, Counciling Greer stated that we needed to raise these rates to quote, "get their attention." I would like to ask those on the council who voted no on the grass issue to give me their reasoning behind that decision. Guess we'll start on either side. Who voted no? Why?
Because mostly people's not mowing their lawns, they're very low-income people. You just take the food out of kids' mouths. They don't care.
Can I say something now, Bruce? I've heard you complain the past few times you've sat here-
I have.
-about addresses and you've said it's been going on for five years. And I tell you, whenever you voted no that night, it, I could've fell out of my chair because you sat there and you complained for thirty minutes about a place on Oak Street, uh, five oh seven, am I right on that list? Was it five oh seven? Was it Oaks? It was five oh seven somewhere, cause I remember the address. And you said it's been like that for five years.
Oh, you're talking about Oakland Street down there.
Oakland.
They hadn't, they hadn't tested it, that would be-
So, so why? I mean, if you was that person's neighbor, how would that make you feel? I mean, your property value's gonna be down.
Well, I'd go over and talk to them.
And if they said no, of yours, you know, like how people in town's gonna do?
I don't know.
I mean, wouldn't you want the city to step in or someone to step in and clean it up?
There you go. That'd be the best. Have a cleanup day.
But they're gonna charge them for that. They're gonna charge them two hundred, I mean, two hundred dollars in Springfield for it.
Well, yeah.
But that's okay. But fining them, the rates isn't okay.
But I can't see taking money away from kids and that's what you're doing. Most of them, most of them don't even work.
But they're gonna take money from you and your property value because they're not gonna clean it up. So you're okay with that because you worked for what you have. I've been that mama on low income. I've been there, I've done that. But I tell you what, I didn't have a trashy place. And I will tell every one of them who wanna feed me that lawn.
Well, I just can't-
They have money for their cigarettes, they have money for their beer, they have money for everything else and they have money to keep their property clean.
Hey, that was Bruce. I don't, don't recall who else voted no, but I'd just like to have a response from each one who voted no.
I think I did, but, um, if we can forego the courts, I'd be all waiting for it, so. At the court, it just takes too long with all the, you know, getting extensions, so. That's one of the reasons I voted no.
Hey, I voted no and I'll tell you something right here and now. I think, I think these tall weeds looks just about as good as brush up and down these streets around here that's not been picked up by the city of Mountain Grove. I'll tell you, I don't think that is right. Nobody has mentioned that either. But go over on Short Street, you'll see it. You know, that don't look right. You know, we've got tree people around here, they oughta call them and, and make them pay it on their own. Not depend on the city doing it all the time. And I understand that Rick says they go out and do it when they don't have anything else to do. Well, are they busy right now?
Yeah, we're busy.
But the limbs of Mountain Grove needs to be picked up.
Well, it don't usually lay out more than two weeks at most.
And, and I am unhappy about it. I really am. Because I think it's just bad to have tall grass. I, I decide, I thought the other day, just to let my grass grow up and letting somebody come, if they ever would, and give me a ticket and I'd come down here and pay it and then I'd say, you know, "It looks a lot better than a bunch of limbs in, in long people's, uh, streets." I don't know whether you've got them over there in your place or not, but I've got them over there.
I'm pretty sure you answered my question. Why'd you vote no? Why, why, why did you vote no?
Why, I voted no.
Why?
But we go through this about every season.
Well, I know, but I wanna know why you voted no.
That's the reason that I, I voted no.
Because there's brush on all of the streets?
No, no. Because we go through this every season about tall grass.
So you just decided to vote no?
And just like this, just like this house that Kate talked about over there by, uh, Mountain Grove Building Supply, that's been there for a long time. That was way back when I worked at the gas company. And I can remember when that fire was. And that's been sitting there for a long time. And everybody I talked to, they say that is nothing but an eyesore. And I think a lot of people in here that would agree with me.
But before we started this discussion, before Holly got off of, oh, been out of shape, I just said, we had eight in Ward Ford. Four of them got cleaned up this week because all we did is went and asked them to clean it up.
I'm not done. I work all day. I am not going to my neighbors and telling them, "You need to mow your lawn."
Yeah, all you have to do is be asked, most of them.
But I agree with Lauren. If we can bypass the court, you know, and we can go get this done and by the way, to send the bill, hey. What, delicate, who instructed the ordinance to be voted on? The ordinance said that they have- When, when they're, when they're in violation, they, don't bother with the ticket. You're in violation, post it after ten days, a couple days, get in there. We didn't tell them, say, "Hey, after ten days, we're gonna cut it, we're gonna send you about a hundred dollar bill." Yeah, just bypass the court completely. Rick, is that?
Yeah, we need to instruct you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and move on because I know you guys have got a lot of stuff.
Are you gonna add this on to the county tax now?
Yeah, I mean, it's a council decree.
Okay, so we're not gonna be out any money, really. We, we will initially, but we'll get back.
Initially, when more will go in.
Well, I voted no because I felt like the, well, he said the amount was too high. We didn't, we didn't talk about a lot of it.
But what I said was, I wanted to get their attention, right? And that would've got their attention.
And that's what I agree with one hundred percent.
But I also know that we got a man in charge of this and we're told that we need to call him. And I've called him numerous times, given him the addresses and it takes a while, but generally they're calling us.
Who's the man that's in charge?
David Richardson.
I talked with David today and, um, his desk is continually full of complaints of, of things just like this.
And that's what we usually find.
I mean, it's, we've got to start somewhere.
Yes.
Let's start somewhere. That's what I'm asking.
We've raised it tonight. I feel like fifty and seventy-five is, I think it's not enough.
I don't think that's gonna get their attention.
I don't either. I didn't feel like that's gonna get their attention.
See, Lauren, we've been fighting this for years, but we're fighting through the courts and the courts let us down.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know, Judy. I don't really answer that.
So what if we do this?
Oh, I think this is great. I mean, I think we need ideas and we need citizens. I think we need the input from our citizens to help us. And we know how you feel and, I mean, I think it helps. We as a council can't do that. We can't. But I've driven around this week. I've driven around last year, this year.
Let's hire someone.
We have someone hotter.
To, no, 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 no. No, no, let's bypass the ticket.
No.
Can we do that?
I don't think we want to totally bypass it because we can take care of an awful lot of them.
By just sending a-
Now, you gotta remember, ninety percent of them clean up after we've contacted them.
But it's the other ten that don't.
And it's usually the same ones every year, isn't it?
Yes.
It seems like there's more this year. I don't know, there's more abandoned houses.
There may be more abandoned houses.
Okay, listen, let Lauren go on.
Um, I anticipated what the answer would be. Not knowing, I didn't know what the answer would be. But the answer I anticipated was that it would to, put too much of a hardship on people to raise the rates. Well, I had an answer for that. My answer to that is the same people who are not mowing their grass, are not paying the fines, are those who seem to always have extra money for their smoking habit and their personal. Now, you cannot leave this meeting saying, "I'm putting down folks who enjoy these things." There are plenty of good citizens who do enjoy these things, but they also pay their taxes, mow their yards and in general, care about their property and our city. And I believe this is the crux of the issue. We're living in a time of entitlement. The city of Mountain Grove does not have to go the way of, of our nation. In Mountain Grove, it's not okay to ignore- In Mountain Grove, it's not okay to ignore the rules. And to give the whole people accountable, we have to decide what standard of living and what quality of life we want here. Do we punish good people who take care of their property and not punish adjoining property owners who's allowed their homes to go into such disrepair, disrepair that lowers the property values in their neighborhoods? I recently spoke with someone who had lived away from Mountain Grove for twenty years. They said it broke their heart to drive down streets and see houses and neighborhoods that were once great neighborhoods, but now they're in such a sad state. Appearances are very important, and people are considering moving to Mountain Grove or perhaps renting a business in town, who are going to drive around and check out our neighborhoods. Are they going to see knee-high weeds, abandoned and burnt out buildings, junk cars, and rundown property? As you drive around the city, ask yourself these questions. Is this a neighborhood I would want to live in? Is this house what I want for my next door neighbor? One of the pictures I brought of a house that is, has been an eyesore over years, I spoke with a young couple living directly behind this house. Their yard was neat and clean, and it was not their desire to have to live next to this mess. The couple had just picked up a huge pile of limbs off of this property and tried to do some weeding, but it was a jungle, it is a jungle, and it was just too much for them to tackle. You, as council members, have the power to take the steps necessary to make this the best place in Azura to call home. You can let newcomers know they're welcome here, but there's a standard things that must be met and take care of their property. It's not fair to, and I'm speaking about a low income people, I'm trusting. Center Street where I was raised, it was, that's a street you didn't wanna be raised on. But that was the poorest rundown street in Mountain Grove, and that's where I hail from, and I'm proud of it. So, I'm for the low income people, my heart bleeds for those people. Uh, so, you know, um, we, we have to watch out for these low income people, um, um. It just, you know, I just feel like we're just missing the mark here. We're just letting too much stuff just, you know, slide by when we could be um, helping these people. Um, you know, these poor people, they're working hard, they're, they're trying to make their neighborhoods a better and a safer place, you know, to raise their kids. And they should not be forced to live in neighborhoods with substandard housing. Our fire chief made a proposal back a few years ago to implement a program where he could inspect houses just to make sure they were safe. He has actually witnessed a house where the furniture had to be nailed to the wall just to keep the furniture in place. Would you wanna live there? It might be time to revisit his proposal. In the last few years, we've been so fortunate to have families and individuals move here with the intention of making this a better place. We've had so many nice businesses and buildings built by these people. They have brought jobs here and added beauty to the city. Our school is in the process of adding a new structure that will draw, that will be a draw for more sports related activities, and this internal bring more people in to spend money here. We have great health facilities here in Mountain Grove with hometown doctors. We're making progress in many areas, but there's still much work to be done. This is, this next thing that I'm gonna say is, is at my heart, the heart of maybe why I'm here today. And I want everybody to listen, please, and take it to heart and think about it. The petty bickering and inviting that in our city government has got to stop. I believe Rick is a knowledgeable man in this area, and we've made great progress with his leadership. The workers in City Hall, they need your support, not your criticism. They're looking for you, they're looking hard. To fulfill your obligations as councilman, you must work together as a team. Of course, there will be times when you are in disagreement, but that's the time to step up and simply do the right thing. I believe everyone in this room wants our city to grow and prosper, so let's all work together to bring this back. Thank you.
Okay, Rick.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, something that needs to be acknowledged, first of all, uh, Lauren, I appreciate you calling the county, and uh, Cindy Cotten Gen has agreed to allow us to put on the county taxes.
I'm sorry, I just wondered.
The county taxes, if we were to mow them, and through a bill. But also, she said she would put on the county taxes a bill if we were forced to tear some of them down. Now, six years ago, we contacted the county, they, they didn't provide that service, so I had to offer her for, for providing that service. And uh, that's really the difference between being able to recover our money and not recover our money. If we go over here, I'm gonna give you an example on Wall Street, as you're going across the tracks, on the right-hand side, block up, there's a two-story house that's been on fire. Weeds are tall, they finally mowed the weeds, they didn't even need a weeder, but they got the weeds knocked down. And the house is, is terrible shape, and, and needs to come down. Well, if we tear, tear that down, in, in the old way that we had, it might take us twenty years to get our money back, or we mean, they would get our money back if the deed stays in the owner's name. But if you can put it on their taxes, then at the end of three years, then, uh, you know, we'd be able to get our money back. So, that was a, that was a huge tool to help us go forward. Now, if you want us to restructure, I don't really think we have to restructure the ordinance to do this, if that's what you want us to do, go in and mow it and send them a bill. Uh, because like I said, the ordinance we have works on ninety percent of the, of the people we contact. It's the ten percent that, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's close to that. And it's the ten percent that, that we have the problem with, you know, repeat offenders, which in both those cases on Wall, they're both out of town, one's out country, one's out, out of city. Uh, and those are just always gonna be a problem. If, if we can now do that work though and put it on the taxes, instead of putting a lien on their property, then we could recover that money at a timely manner rather than waiting for twenty years or maybe never getting it back. Because, you know, we might have, I think more, how many do we have, more, twenty-three?
I sent fifteen out, certified.
Fifteen certified letters went out on House. Okay. If it costs us three thousand, and we'd be lucky if it's that cheap, but if, but if it costs us three thousand, that's forty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's a lot, huh? And so, you don't wanna spend forty-five thousand dollars with no possibility of getting it back or waiting twenty years to get it back. Now, we have to wait three years to get it back, that's a different story altogether, but, uh, so that was a huge piece of information and, and um.
Rick?
And I don't know if Miss Cotten Gen, other than see your name on paper, but she needs to be commended for taking that on.
Could you find up all of the information on this? All the details and the question banks, and bring it up for our decision at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Now, just.
I uh.
Get on the answers.
And I looked, Lauren said she looked at Springfield's ordinance on dilapidated vacant houses, and I went online, I looked at their ordinance, and I think that they probably used a cookie cutter ordinance, kinda like we use, because our ordinance is just about word for word what their ordinance is, with the exception that they've added a few things. So, our ordinance is a strong ordinance, where our problem lies is civil law.
Yeah, why, why does theirs work in ours then? Because they're a huge city that's got the money to put out pavements for now. Forty-five thousand dollars is not very much money to see Springfield, it's a lot of money to see Mountain Grove. So, that's really, until, until now, we haven't had that option to get, to cover that money, so that's really been a.
Unless they're getting on the details and then.
Yes, I, yes, I mean, is that what the council wants, or we're more than happy to run that back?
That'd be great.
Yeah, we'll have it back next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. Okay, next, Ms. Ally Roberts, one more to remove off.
Hi, I'm under three eighty. And I'm living a house in two thousand and seven, and there was no water runoff at that point in time. Speaking of a little bit, in the middle where the gravel from Miller Electric, um, and now flooding all the way up the driveway and, and in the carport. You've been out there?
Yeah, I've been out there twice.
What were we, what were we talking?
It's worse than where it was.
Where it was.
Tuck behind, you know where uh, Jonesy lived or used to live? It's uh.
Brentwood?
The east of, where his, I said, on the curb, right on the curb on the east side of that.
Right on the corner.
Right behind Miller Electric and County Country Warehouse.
Yeah.
You're across the street from uh, the docks.
I am. And everybody on that street has either a culvert or a ditch dug that had concrete in it, everybody on both sides except for me. And I don't understand why I now have problems and I didn't have problems in Drake again. And I'm, I'm too old to be scraping all that dirt off, off the driveway, you've been out there once, and it's worse now than what it was. And grass is growing, and I have bear spots where I didn't have bear spots, I have gravel where I didn't have gravel. And um, your guy Bob from the water department came out, I was really impressed with him. He uh, wouldn't come any further than the driveway. He said all that water that, and stuff that came from the hill down and landed in my uh, carport, that was Miller's problem for some reason, he caused it, pushed it off on him. Now, I, I don't see how Miller can be, he's got the same ground problem I've got. So, I have pictures, if you all wanna see them. And I don't have, what I don't have is when the water is real high in the, I've got where all the sediment is left and the gravel and the bear spots. And I'm wanting the city to dig either a trench on either side and down the front, or I'm wanting to do something, I'm not paying taxes. And everybody else has got one, why did they not put one in my place?
Let me see the pictures then.
I've, I've talked to Bob a couple times, I don't know if he's.
He's pretty rude, I mean, frankly, he didn't give a damn, so.
Well, Bob's a good man, that's my opinion, he's, he does a extra good job.
Well, then, why is it, why is it Miller's problem that the water's running down, that he caused it? That's craziness.
Yeah, is the water coming off of Miller's land?
It's coming off the highway. And there's, I've got information that I'll give you the next time, if, if I should need to show up, that says that anytime you have pavement, commercial buildings and that sort of thing, the water can't soak in, so it's gonna run up. So.
Going to the service.
Yes, but it can't, can't um, penetrate the ground with all the pavement there and the ropes and the more buildings you have. So, it just gets worse every year.
Is the water coming off the city streets or off Miller's land?
No, it's coming, was coming off the city streets. And you can see it run down once ran in between um, the Cosmetique Beauty Shop and County Country, I mean, you can see it pushing down from the highway. So. I mean, I, I'm not from this town, and I chose to come here and buy, so I'm kinda like Gal was saying, I, I want my, my property, you know, keep it up, and then I have all those people across the street from me, now I have a water problem, and I'll take the people for I have a water problem, but.
It's just a water problem from the rain.
Yes.
Whatever it rains.
But it, yeah, and it's whatever it rains, it doesn't have to be a big rain.
And, and that's my question, I mean, if this happens, is that the city's job to build?
Well, that's, that's the sixty-four thousand dollar question. We have over a year's time on the corner, built that corner up, all the dirt built head up, and try to help keep that map. Now, she's right, she doesn't have a ditch in front of her own.
But is that something the city dug with all the other houses? Did the city?
Well, that, that, I don't know, see, that's a, that's an older subdivision, so I don't know if that's, I'm guessing that's just the way it was built. Uh, you know, originally developed, because back in those days, they really didn't use uh, curbs like they, like our new requirements have there. There was a lot of old divisions back in those days. And so, I'm sure that's just the way it was built, but, uh, but I noticed, and it's easy to notice on the pictures, that, that um, she obviously doesn't have a ditch from her house. So, I don't know, water rounds the corner, and it is coming off of Miller, it's coming off of County Country, it's coming off the street. And when you have a torrential rain, now, keep in mind, when we have a torrential rain, we have five hundred places in town that have a problem.
Did this, then I have to be torrential, sorry.
Uh, but there's uh, but it does run across there, but we put this there, where's Mike?
Mike?
We have Mike.
You'll come in and give us a mill.
We, we wouldn't have a problem putting a ditch in front of her place, would we?
And to the side too, I mean, so it would all run down, because it's, it has to be put to the side between me and Miller too. Now, Miller's tried to.
Right.
Put a little gravel up there, but that's not gonna hold.
We don't have a problem building a ditch. Frankly, I didn't think you'd want one.
Can you, I'd like to have concrete, and I'd probably ask it too much.
Yeah, that's asking a little too much.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can build you a ditch where the water will drain, that's not a problem.
See, it's coming from the side too, I mean, it's, I'm getting hit from two sides, from the street where the street comes in between, and then down also down to the street and down north, and then over, I've got gravel covering my yard.
Yeah, I know, I saw it. I mean, there's frost, there's a problem. Um. Council, you'd have to authorize, because we have a policy right now that we'll put a tin horn in it. We do the labor if they pay for the tin horn. She's never had it, because she's never had a ditch. So, how much is a tin horn? Mike?
Couldn't go a full-size tin horn there, I was just mowing, so, I don't know, probably looking about eight dollars a foot.
Eight?
Eight.
Yes. Eight dollars a foot, we'd be out of that cost, but our labor, I mean, the digging of the ditches is like, um, a tin horn would be a cost that we don't normally make. So, that can be your call, but, but we do that.
And the problem is too, I, I know I've got the, my grandkids, and I'm raising them now. And last year, there's two buses head start from school, and kids can't even fit. Two, the bus, they have to go clear around on the other side of the gravel to, to try to get to the, but nowhere in my yard. And, and some of them, they, they can't even walk there near the bus, so I mean, it's just nothing but mud and water. So, that's a problem.
What's the best way to fix it, Rick? What do you think?
Well, honestly, uh, when we talked about it, we thought ditch, but most people trying to get us to fill in ditches not doing.
Yeah, I, I just want a solution.
We shouldn't have assumed that she wouldn't mind the ditch, I mean, if she doesn't mind the ditch, that's the best way to fix it. Wouldn't you agree, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, Mike.
You know what, I think we oughta just go ahead and try to take care of this lady's problem.
Uh, about a ditch or about tin horn?
Well, I think it'd probably be better if we just put a tin horn in there, that way it wouldn't already roll out, and uh.
We need to change our policy though for everyone, and just for her?
Well, maybe for everyone, I mean, you know, she's got a problem. Now, uh, I don't know that a ditch will level more shat than one is, or, or so that.
You can actually.
Make some concrete somehow.
Well, we'll have to see, we're at the scene, we'll, we'll have to see. But we have ditches all over town there. Uh, can work on it. There is.
Same problem with my house.
I don't know, I don't.
But we'll try to do something, yeah, yeah, try to do something.
Can you get close, I know I'm messing up, on the side and front of the ditch? If you put gravel in that ditch between me and Miller.
That'll be it, you don't have my, take a look at it, is that on Miller's land or is that on the city's land?
Yes, I don't know.
It's between me and, and we'll be, someone be, someone else.
We can't really get it on Miller's land.
He can let you have that, because he's got problems.
We, we, if we had an easement, we could, we'd have to have an easement for both of you to do that, which is no big deal, we can do it easily for he.
Like I said, he tied himself to it with a little ditch.
We, we, if we had an easement, we could. We'd have to have an easement for both of you to do that, which is no big deal. We can do it easily for you.
Like I said, he tried himself to do it with a little ditch or whatever, but.
Well, we, yes, we'd have to have his permission to do anything on his property. Um, but we've been asking.
What would the ten horn cost in Laido? Do you think?
No, probably not.
And I'm not saying anything about her, but I'm gonna say this. So I meant, excuse me if this upset you, bitch. If we're gonna put a ten horn on your property, we are gonna have every city council meeting, a lot of people in here wanting to own theirs. And that's gonna be a lot of city money that, you know, if we waive it for her, then just like them were said. When is that gonna come to? Are we just gonna do it to her specific? You know, because someone else is gonna come in here with the same argument.
If, if this was just one where having torrential rain, it'd be local. But this is happening every time.
And I can totally understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying that someone else is gonna come in and say the same thing. I mean, if we can do a ditch and that's gonna fix the problem, then, you know, then great. I, I mean, I'd say probably start, start there, you know.
We have to have a ten horn.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to have a ten horn.
But then, so is that gonna be out the city fund?
Well, that's, that's your own call. I'm not, I'm just saying we have to have.
Well, this adds up in that your interest.
Only go half a million, because I, I think, because everybody else has got one, there should have been one to begin with to prevent all this. But like I said, in two thousand seven, the problem wasn't that bad. I mean, it was just barely over where the gravel meets the gra.
Was there curbing there at one time?
Was it what?
Curbing there at one time.
No, I, I've asked for curbing guttering there, you know, that didn't go over.
I had the same problem on Ice Street, about here, Ring Street. The wind's terrible. Didn't that drain where it already?
Yeah.
All the water comes from the street.
So I would think the EPA would have, I mean, because when you have water runoff and that erosion, you're, you're polluting a lot of drinking water. And I think the EPA actually has regulations. I started looking in my, like, name of time to finish.
Okay, so what does the council want to do on this?
Well, I believe we need to do something. I don't know exactly what. If we just do the ditch, you know, we'd like to say the ten horn is gonna be more permanent.
If you dig a ditch down to the driveway, you have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to have a ten horn.
Was curbing, is it cheaper than ten horn?
No, curbing, quite a bit. Check it out and see what you think.
Yeah, we could have, uh, have a street creep go out and look it over and then come back next meeting and let us know if that's where to fix it. You'd be okay with it?
Thank you so much. Your consideration, your thought.
I'm the council, we go by and look at it and see what I think.
Too far for me, I don't think from what I hear.
Just go, just on the right side of the street.
Thank you so much.
Just careful, Bob.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, Lauren, we've got a discussion, and starting out with Mr. Steve.